AR two becomes the best fit, so that's what they've requested and staff's recommending approval.
All right, thank you ma'am. Is she speaking on item three? Can't you hear me?
She can.
She can. All right, go ahead ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Any questions, comments from the board? Call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
All's in favor, approval, any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item four is a public hearing for Daniel Henry, request to rezone five point one acres from AR one to AR two to allow for the division of the parcel located at forty-three oh two Old Dixie Highway, this is the third district. Good evening, Mr. Henry.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So did I pretty much sum it up, you have five acres and you want to divide it into, I believe, hopefully, three parcels, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
All right, so. Questions, comments from the board at this time? Ms. Teresa, do you have anything you wish to add?
Uh, no, that's really it. It's five acres and Mr. Henry wishes to split it and thus must rezone it to accommodate the smaller parcels.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Anyone on Zoom? And I assume your next step will be going to the Health Department for...
I've went to the Health Department and did the perk test thing, I did that already and I've submitted it to the count, to the commission. The last step I was told was to have the person that goes out to actually...
Like a soil scientist?
Yeah.
Yes. Anything further? Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval with the staff recommendation.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Larson, all's in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Good luck, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Item five is a public hearing for Franklin and Gail Smith, request to rezone five acres from AR one to AR two to allow for the creation of a home site located at nineteen hundred Old Dixie Highway. Good evening, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, could I ask you to state your name and...
Gail Smith.
Ms. Gail Smith, thank you. And you are dividing your land for the creation of a home site, is that correct?
That's true, yes.
Anything else you would like to tell us? That's pretty much it.
The plat's been done and so has the soil scientist.
All right, thank you. Ms. Teresa, do you have anything to add at this point?
Just really like the last one, this is five acre parcel, so it's zoned AR one and that's appropriate, but in order to split it, we did ask that the applicant submit a request for rezoning to AR two. That way we can sign the parcel as soon as the rezoning is complete, or sign the plat as soon as the rezoning is complete. And as soon as the Health Department has signed it.
They have signed it.
Oh, okay, I don't have a copy of that one.
Okay.
All right, questions, comments? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Call, is there anyone on the Zoom? You have to yell at me, I mean, it's okay. I call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval, is there a second? Second, Ms. Smith, all's in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, ma'am. Item six, public hearing for Shell Polk, requesting a variance from the required eight hundred foot block length located on Courthouse Road, zone AR two, this is the fourth district. Mr. Polk, is there a representative for Mr. Polk?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Shell Polk.
Yes, sir. Would you mind explaining the reason for your request?
Yeah, I'm asking for a variance because it requires a road to turn to the left or to the right, but it's surrounded by wetlands and then on the right side it is surrounded by homes, so I don't have an opportunity to create that road.
Ms. Teresa, can you wish to explain?
Yes, so this parcel which we rezoned late last year is AR two and can be developed. It's going to be developed with a community water system, individual septic systems. This is the wetlands layer, so the darker green you see there is where wetlands, according to the National Wetlands Inventory, run through the parcel. It limits the development potential of the rear, the rear portion of it, but as Mr. Polk noted, on the, both the, on both sides, left and right, he is unable to stub out a road to connect to an adjacent parcel of land because they're both developed and there would be no development, no opportunity to continue the development or create connectivity at a later time. So because of that, staff are recommending approval of this request for variance from the eight hundred foot block length requirement.
Gotcha. All right, thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? I'll call for a motion. Make a motion to approve. Motion for approval, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Larson, all's in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, sir. One second. Item seven is a public hearing for Shell Polk, requesting approval of a sketch plan for Primrose Place located on Courthouse Road, zone AR two, this is in the fourth district. You have anything you wish to tell us about this one?
Probably nothing but other than what Ms. Diane can share.
Ms. Teresa? Ms. Teresa?
Yeah, this is the sketch plan that's been submitted, so we see the lots will be about half an acre and slightly larger and we're awaiting final Health Department approval of the septics on the lots. I think you sent me the level three soil survey today and we're waiting on final approval from the Health Department. This will be served by Community Water System, Water Utility Management and the development should, will consist of up to eighteen lots on nineteen point five six acres. We've met for, with the sketch plan pre-application meeting and Mr. Polk has met all of our requirements so far, so assuming this is approved, we would move on and issue a notice to proceed and then work with him on the land development permit.
Could be more than eighteen lots, could be up to twenty.
If there's a change in the number of lots, then, you know, there's the sketch plan, we would obviously need a new sketch plan and at that point we would determine whether we needed to run it through for approval again, but the, in principle, probably the main information about the subdivision won't change, the number of lots. We'll see what the Health Department comes up with there.
Questions, comments at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? There's nothing from the board, I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve with staff.
A motion for approval, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Higgins, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, Mr. Polk. Item eight is a public hearing for F. Lamar Allen, request to rezone point four nine acres from AR two to AR one to allow for the combination of adjacent parcels located on Courthouse Road, this is the fourth district. Yes, sir. Item two is moved to the end of the meeting, so, yes, sir. Ms. Teresa, can you tell us about item eight?
Yes, so this, I've circled the portion of land we're talking about. There's a sliver from this plat here that is going to be combined with the larger acreage and because we rezoned it as part of the Clyde Road subdivision last year, it's AR two, but the larger acreage is AR one, so in order to combine them, those zoning districts need to be the same and so today the applicant is asking us to rezone that point four nine acres to AR one, so it can be combined with that larger acreage.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments at this time? Yes, sir, could I ask you to state your name?
Lamar Allen.
Lamar Allen, thank you. And do you agree with what she said? I mean, you're just combining it.
Yeah, we just bought that piece there because it was just a little narrow strip that connects us to the road now. Connects me to the road, anyway.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Nobody there? I call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve with staff.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Zipper, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Then items nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen have been removed and moved to a later meeting.
What date is that new meeting?
March twenty first.
March twenty first? Thank you.
March twenty first. Item fourteen and fifteen are both Wesley R. Newrath, request a variance to waive the restriction that a private unpaved road may serve no more than three lots located on Nellie Road. This is on AR one, this is the fifth district. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, how y'all? Wesley R. Newrath.
Can you explain the reason you're here?
I'm giving three acres of land to my son to put a house on.
So it's because it's more than three lots on this easement, which I'm assuming is all family?
Yes, all family. He's not going to use that driveway.
He's not?
And they called me about putting easement on the other side, but then he couldn't use that if he put easement, have two easements on it, so.
All right, sir.
And I'm not planning on doing nothing with the other two and a half acres anyway. Just in front of my house.
Ms. Teresa?
Yes, so we, it's, it's, initially it was really a simple request, you know, Mr. Newrath wanted to split the acreage to accommodate a second lot, but that would require rezoning, it's AR one and it needs to be rezoned to AR two, so that's the simple part. Then we noticed that it was creating, this rear lot would have been, would have to be served by an easement and the lots behind it clearly were already being served by the easement. So there is a restriction on more than three lots on a private road or easement, but in this case, it really does seem that there's a hardship in that adding a second sixty foot easement to anywhere else in that front parcel one as shown there would potentially reduce the buildable acreage and could affect their building plans, their development plans. So in that sense, the staffer was willing to recommend approval of this variance.
All right, thank you, ma'am. You good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Questions, comments at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? All good. Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval with all staff recommendation.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mrs. Zipper, all's in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item fifteen, the public hearing for Wesley R. Newrath, request to rezone five point five acres from AR one to AR two to allow for the creation of a home site located on Nellie Road, this is the fifth district. Pretty much said it all?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Same parcels.
Ms. Teresa, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, this is really, at this point, it's just a simple rezoning and that's necessary because the five acres is being reduced below. It'll be split in two and so neither lot will be large enough for AR one, so it has to be rezoned to AR two.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? No one there. Call for a motion.
Make a motion for approval with staff recommendation.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor of approval. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, Mr. Newrath.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Since this, since item sixteen is ordinance discussion, would it be acceptable to insert item two at this point? Or do we, do we have to go to the end? Would that be acceptable to the board? Item two is a public hearing for Jerome S. Conter, his agent for JGH Commercial LLC, request to rezone eighteen point six seven acres from PD Commercial to PD Residential to allow for multifamily residential development located on Hodgsville Road, this is the second district.
Yes, sir, good evening.
Good evening. Unfortunately, my engineer was unable to make it here, so...
Could I ask you to state your name, please?
My name is Jerome Conter.
Thank you, sir.
I am the managing member of the LLC, own the majority portion of ownership and am the developer of Belmont Glen, which is part of this. It's important to note that this was originally part of the research, the research track that was a major PUD. As many of you probably are aware, the greatest portion of that was condemned by the IDA for commercial development. A big part of this track was originally zoned for residential. When the water and sewer lines were extended to this area, there was about four thousand taps that were anticipated that would be put onto the water sewer system and of course with the development of the commercial site, a significant number of taps have been reduced. for revenue to repay the cost of the extension of the line. We feel that the most appropriate use now of this property is a downzoning into residential rather than use it for the commercial use that it is currently zoned for under the PUD. The whole idea of having a PUD is that you can trade around how you put the density where, as long as you don't exceed the maximum density that was approved within the PUD. So I've reviewed the PUD, the original PUD documents, and there is more than ample density still allowed to be used on this property. The owners that I represent believe that right now, we're only looking to get zoning in place. We used an exhibit that was submitted originally as a concept of what could be done, not necessarily what will be done. We're not looking for site plan approval at this meeting. We're just looking for the zoning change so that we can then pursue the final plans that would either happen through a sale of this property or happen through development by, by myself. So that's where we are, and that's why we're submitting this now. But I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission has or the planning has.
All right, sir. Thank you, Mr. Conter. Ms. Teresa, do you wish to make a statement?
Uh, well, this is, as he said, this is zone PD, this is a commercial portion of the original plan development, and the request is to rezone to multif, to residential for multifamily use. And the, it is true that one of the conditions is that we would require a sketch plan, and that's where we would, we would come down to a final number. So it might not be appropriate to be asking for the two hundred and six or hundred and seventy four units, but just to really rezone it for multifamily?
Yeah, I mean, we're, obviously, we want to establish the maximum density that would be allowed on the property. We started with this sketch plan, which showed the maximum amount of green space, the maximum distance between potential buildings using what is typically used in most of the other municipalities, like the city of Savannah, unincorporated Chatham County, et cetera. They're pretty uniform in how they treat multifamily, distance between buildings, buffer areas around the exterior of the property. And all of those are in conformance with, with, and I'm not suggesting that Effingham County needs to follow the rules of other municipalities. But we used what would have been the most stringent requirements that we would see if we were going to develop a site in another municipality that already has existing zoning in place with, with very distinct parameters of what you can and can't do. And that's how we came up with the original hundred and seventy four unit density.
Yes, so the plan development document, which is part of your package, it does go into details of the percentage of land uses. There are ranges rather than absolute numbers, and that, I guess, is because originally it was one hundred and seventy four units. And the most recent version of the PD document now states at two hundred and six units. So I'm not sure exactly how we would handle that. The rezoning of the PD, usually, we have a pretty solid handle on what is going forward. And then there's a question, you know, do we need a sketch plan at that, at that point? With this one, we'll definitely need a sketch plan to go through that process and to perhaps, to look at the densities and the buffers and make sure everything is meeting our requirements. So in general, staffer recommending approval of the rezoning, but the details would need to be hammered out later. And that's where we've added the conditions that a sketch plan must be approved by the Board of Commissioners before the site development plans are submitted. And also, a traffic study must be submitted during the land, the site development review process.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments from the board at this time?
Do you anticipate those being townhomes or apartments?
Well, I can't say that I anticipate exactly what the in-use, exactly what it's going to be now because I don't know whether it will be developed by our company or by another company. The idea is not to handicap them into a proprietary site plan if that's not the direction they want to take. If they know what their density is, they then have to design to that density. And they will have to satisfy this, this body, and then ultimately, the county commissioners, that, that the site plan is an acceptable site plan. All that we're trying to lock in is the density.
So this parcel was part of the original Belmont Glen land, or this is being added?
Yeah, yes, it was.
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Conter, if you would address the board, please, and we'll, they'll have, everyone will have their chance.
So there are, there are, there were four parcels that were part of the original site plan that was approved. One was for, for the Belmont Glen, which was originally approved at six hundred and ten units. It ended up being five eighty. We reduced the density in that master plan because when we got to phase three B of Saddle Club, we eliminated twenty something lots and dug a big pond. Then there was the commercial site that was part of that PUD, and it was just designated as commercial. And it was seventeen point five acres roughly. Then there was the remaining land that was originally zoned, it is zoned, single-family residential. It is now being developed by Ernest Communities. But originally, it was, it was thought that we would develop it and sell lots as an equestrian community. That's why the whole area was called Belmont Glen. And those were much larger lots. But the seventeen and a half acres that was commercial was always part of the PUD from day one.
Okay.
Why are you rezoning if you don't have any intent to develop it?
I do have an interest to develop it, but I have partners that are owners also. So.
I guess I was confused. You said you, you weren't going to develop it earlier.
He's gonna sell it to someone who is going to develop it.
What I said was I wouldn't want to handicap a potential sale to another developer from a standpoint of they have to develop to the site plan that I proposed. That's why we're not asking for site plan approval tonight. We're asking for density. I anticipate, I would prefer to buy my partners out and develop it, but I have not reached an understanding on that basis yet.
And if you did buy it out to develop it, would it be commercial? So you could put stores there and?
No, no. It's, it's planned to be multifamily only. That's the zoning, the rezoning we're seeking.
Fair enough.
And if we, if we were to do it, it would be lower rise. The, what was submitted as a sketch plan was all townhome style buildings, very small buildings, six unit and eight unit buildings, only two stories, again, with all the buffering, et cetera, that we had proposed. But another developer may want to go, they may want to go three stories high and have more green space left for, for something else. I, I just can't handicap them and then diminish the value of the land in, in good conscience to the, to the other partners that are part of this.
Understood. Anything further at this time? For that question, I'm, Mr. Conter, we thank you for your presentation, and we may have some questions for you in a moment.
I'll be here.
So I'll open the podium to anyone else, either in favor or against.
I apologize. I've never done this before. I've never been in kind of setting like this.
You're fine. Can I get you to state your name?
Nick Hitt.
Nick Hitt?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Um, one of the biggest complaints, and I'm sure you're gonna hear a lot of, of thoughts and questions today, but one of the biggest complaints I have as a parent, I'm a single dad with three kids. We've already gotten letters in the community for us to rezone our kids to different schools. An apartment unit of this size is just gonna overflow the already crowded schools that we have. And my second question would be if this is gonna be a low-income unit? Or is it subsidized living? Or what's going on with that?
All right, sir. I thank you for your time, and we'll get some answers for your question. Is there anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Crystal Hayes. Most of my comments mirror pretty much what he said is what we're looking at as far as the schools. Our children also got, I have three children, also got redistricted into another school due to the hardship of Belmont Glen specifically is the area that got redistricted because of hardships of the school on South Effingham Elementary. We're now in Blandford as of this coming year. And I know that the roads are really hard to drive on. They're very busy. There's a lot of traffic. Getting onto Hodgsville and going on Goshen or Blue Jay or Thirty, which I know Thirty is its own thing. But I do know that building more will affect that. And as far as infrastructure, there aren't a lot of stores. There's not buses that go out there. So if there were going to be multifamily developments, there's really not a lot of infrastructure out there for that. I don't know. That's just my thoughts on it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Yes, sir.
Walker Edwards?
Good evening, Mr. Edwards.
So I am the president of the Belmont Glen HOA. And so we represent about four hundred and fifty homes in Belmont Glen with another hundred homes that are approved for New Haven, which will be on the other side of where this property is. So we are side by side to this property. We all have concerns about whether this property will be low-income housing and what that'll do to our property values. In addition, I know Mr. Conter said that this was just a rough drawing or whatever exact wording he used, but it did call for three hundred and seventy five total parking spaces. So that's three hundred and seventy five, three hundred and seventy five more cars on our, on Hodgsville. There's four main intersections on Hodgsville, and it, in the mornings and the afternoons, those intersections are slammed. So that's three hundred and seventy five, five more cars trying to get in or out. In addition, it's, it's called for two hundred and six units. I mean, with an average family of two kids, I mean, that's four hundred more kids in our schools, and our, our kids in our neighborhood just got displaced from our schools that we were going to. So where are those other four hundred students gonna go? So, yep, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are y'all doing tonight?
Good, sir.
I have two, my name is Todd Wenderath. I'm on the Board of Directors with Mr. Walker. And just to follow up and to seal on what people have already brought up is I moved from California over a year ago researching the school districts, having my kids go there. I bought with the Conter, saw the development, the wetlands, the trees, and what Gaithlin had to offer. So I moved from California all the way out here to get what I'm getting. It has dramatically changed in the years. Seems like nothing that was promised, and the vision that I saw has been just mulled over. The schools, they can't handle it. Even if, I know that you guys have a job due with the district and planning, but you all have to understand the family when people sit down at the table, what they're dealing with, with the aftermath of politics. So everybody's here tonight. They're upset because we gotta go home. We're dealing with the traffic. My wife leaves over an hour and a half early just to get to Savannah on a twenty mile trip that should take thirty minutes. It's an hour and a half. Wear and tear, idling costs, the roads, you know, and the traffic. I also want to point out that there's people that are tired of the trees being cut down. Where we are, you know, we can get into a lot of politics with the Amazon Forest, and we're complaining about that being cut down. Shame on us for what we're doing in our own backyard. This has just gotten out of hand. The, the, I'm sorry, the, the traffic, the noise, Hodgsville can't handle it. Things are being put in place as with really no future development. You put, I don't know, a hundred, I don't know what they have planned, but let's just go with the flow of a potential hundred and seventy four. That's two cars a unit. Three, do the math, three hundred plus more vehicles? We got New Haven that is gonna be a part of Belmont. We're, we're gonna be on that Board of Directors with them. They've got future plans on the back end of what they're doing right now. The math isn't there. We can't handle it. That road can't handle it, and it's affecting everybody. And we feel that the, the values are just gonna be plummeting because it's turning into downtown Savannah on a dark country road. You don't even have streetlights up there. There's, there's no infrastructure. Our water pressure is zero. They talk about, you know, they were laying the pipes down, but it's just not there. They don't take showers where we're taking showers. They're not doing the dishes. People have to kind of live with the facts of what it means after y'all approve or disapprove of what it's doing to everybody back here. It's not a pretty sight. And if it is gonna be in the interest of everybody to move forward, take your time. Let's get done with one development that's, so it's already got the lots all planned out, the infrastructure put in there. Let's build that, and let's go slow. Let's get, let's get more infrastructure down the road. Let's get the roads paved. Saddle Club is bumpy coming in. I've asked for the road to be paved. It's all alligator crap. It's a brand-new development. It just, we, we can't handle this, what's going on. It's too fast, too soon. Shame on us for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Has anything to add?
This is Crystal Hayes again. I did forget to mention one thing. I do live in Belmont Glen, and some of the sidewalks aren't even finished. They end at pipes. So my kids will be riding down the sidewalks, and there's a big gap. So I don't understand why we're still building when we're not taking care of what we've built. The only other thing that I did not mention is that we all share a facility, a pool, a workout room in soccer fields. And that pool is full during the summer. It is just full. It's swamped, it's packed, whatever. I know that Mr. Conter is doing another development, and from what I understand, I could be wrong, that pool and all of those facilities are to be shared with a new development as well, that New Haven.
It's, it's, I mean, it's, obviously, that's HOA. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. But I did want to mention that about the sidewalk.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Yes, sir. I believe there's, sir.
Hello, my name is Christopher Gabinski. I sign in here. Thank you for taking the time to, you know, put this together so we can come up and speak. I'm relatively new to the area. My family and I just recently relocated here from the metro Detroit area. One of the reasons that we had picked Belmont Glen, a couple of different factors, was the proximity to southeast Effingham Elementary School. And also, from what we were told, that there was going to be a limit or no townhomes or no NDU's in the considerable future, given the growth. Well, as a lot of people had just stated here, that we are now being redistricted. And from what they're suggesting and what I'm hearing him say, we'll figure it out down the road. Sounds like we're, you, you know, we're gonna give you an inch, but we're, you know, we're gonna take a mile. If you don't have, you know, a firm plan, especially with a multi-dwelling, you know, development going in, and we're already straying down the schools, what's next? And from what I heard, the original master plan, and now, like I said, I've only been here about eight months or so, that originally, that was not supposed to include townhomes. Now we're talking about possible apartments going in there, and we don't even have the school set up yet to where, where they're going to go. If this goes through, we're only robbing Peter to pay Paul. And so while I understand there is a need for housing, it's, you know, booming, there is a lot of people that are, you know, flocking out of the north. Now that a lot of people can work from home like myself, it's too fast. And I really, you know, And I really, you know, some of the stuff that I heard and I respect what he has to say does not line up what I have heard at previous board meetings and what I've, you know, read and reviewed on my own. So I'd ask the board to kind of, you know, slow down. This seems a little bit too fast and without a firm, you know, plan in place, that just sends off a lot of alarm bells in my head.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gabinski.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Is there anyone, um, wish to add to the comments?
No. My name is Agnes Storchewski. I am concerned a little, I know everybody wants...
Can I, can I ask you to re-speak your name for Mr. Gabinski?
Okay, Agnes Storchewski.
Storchewski, thank, and did you sign, please? Thank you.
I understand that everybody wanna make money and we're growing so fast, but we're missing, um, businesses like coffee shops and stores and our community is big and we have to go to Rincon to go shopping and, um, Pooler. We, I don't, this part maybe we can change it for like coffee shop or small grocery, so we're saving the roads for traffic, it's just local people can come in to the, or gas station or something closer. So I'm just concerning about traffic, most of the time.
All right, traffic, yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Storchewski. Is there anyone with anything new to add that wishes to speak?
Hello, sorry, I won't take that long, my name is Casey Schuman.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanna say, uh, in two thousand and five, I married a boy from Effingham County and I grew up in West Chatham, used to city life, Savannah. Um, we lived in Effingham for seven years, had both our children here, made the mistake of moving to Pooler to be closer to work in Savannah. Um, I don't know if y'all ever go to Pooler, we lived in Godly Station. What sounds like is gonna happen in our community is the reason we moved back to Effingham County. Uh, my children were in a school built for twelve hundred students, by the time we moved, there were nineteen hundred children, modular buildings. All the teachers were quitting and leaving the county, uh, to come here or to leave teaching altogether. And I just feel like we should learn from the mistakes perhaps some of our neighbors have made, like everybody wants to live in Effingham for a reason, our schools are wonderful, it's a rural area. And I don't think Hodgville Road is ready for that type of development, like everyone said, the traffic is terrible. I go to work at five and six in the morning, so it's not that bad. But I know on my days off when I take my kids to school, it's, it can be hard to turn out of the neighborhood now. So I just, I'm not saying, you know, it couldn't be a residential zoning area, but maybe we should think about what type of residential zoning and maybe think of the impact it would have on our schools and our roads. And I thank you for the traffic study because I'm just curious to know what that will let us find out in real numbers, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Schuman.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in here that, yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Robin Jones and, um, my, my thing is, um, like the young lady just said, we moved to Effingham County for a reason. The school district, the amount of kids per classroom, the education and everything, we could've stayed in Chatham County years ago, but this was the place to come where your children could get a excellent education without you going to a private school. And now it's changing. My children started and it was maybe fifteen, sixteen, at the most, nineteen students per class. And that's a good ratio for teachers. It's now jumping twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-nine kids per class. I think it's just too much and like they said, you got the other houses coming in. Now they're talking about apartments, if the area is commercial, why can't it stay commercial? Bring in some coffee shops, bring in some small delis or something like that, so we don't have to travel to Pooler. Why can't our money stay here? That's my portion.
All right.
Good point, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. So, I mean, we've heard a lot of information tonight, is there anyone that has anything to add to any of these comments? Um, got somebody on, uh, the Zoom finally. All right, if, if you're on Zoom, could I ask you to state your name and your comments, please?
My name is Karen Carter and I'm a resident of Belmont Glenn. Um, I'm also a realtor, but I would like to add, um, just to make sure that the board is aware that the land directly across from our neighborhood, it was just recently rezoned, um, for industrial without an idea of what is to come there, so that may add more traffic on Hodgville as it is, depending on what's gonna be approved there. Um, but also that the proposed land that they're proposing to rezonate is directly impacting our HOA own properties, the amenities and the HOA land behind it. So there's no buffers, that could be a problem in the future. But I would also like to know because Mr. Conter stated that, um, he, when one of the board members asked if it was going to be apartments, he stated he didn't know because he might sell it. But there's been talk, um, around that he was, that it is being proposed as his own properties or apartments to sell. So I'd like to clear understand, but at the end of it, what I'd like to do is propose to the board to consider not approving any rezoning proposal without a plan as to what's going to be developed that can be approved by planning a zoning in our home life before any rezoning.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Carter. Is there anyone else on the Zoom?
No.
That's all? All right. Uh, Mr. Conter, um, I may have a few questions for you now, if you would return to...
I'd like to respond to some of the comments if I could because I, first of all, I, I understand the frustrations that the residents have behind me. However, you know, this one, this one proposed rezoning is not the crux of the problem. And if you believe that there's not gonna be any further development along Hodgville Road, then you are sorely mis-informed. Uh, I, uh, will tell you that this is a downzoning, it's not...
Uh, Mr. Conter, could I, could I, I'm sorry, would you address the board, please?
I just hate to have my back on people. It, it is a downzoning. Uh, Mr. Zipper owns a concrete plant across the street from it or a pipe plant and I'm not saying that that's a bad thing, but, but the current zoning, which is commercial, would allow us to do industrial type of development. And that would put more traffic on that road if you did a traffic study. And that's by right, we have the right to do that because it's zoned that way now. That's by right, we could do that. And the ultimate outcome would be truck traffic instead of vehicle traffic, car traffic. It would be far more disruptive to the current residents. So a downzoning to, a downzoning to multifamily is a benefit to the surrounding residents. I know that they don't see it that way. But when they bought, this was there, it was zoned, it was commercial. And it could be developed commercially. Uh, it is a benefit to these residents to have it. It's gonna be well buffered from them, they won't even see the rooftops from their homes. Uh, so the, the, uh, the appropriate precautions come at site plan review. That's when you ferret out what needs to be done. The density is, getting density approved gives them certainty of how many units will go there. Uh, so, you know, it's very often that people say, "Not in my backyard," but I am sure there were people that were on Colic Helmy that said, "I can't believe you're gonna move down there and put pressure on my school." They had the same feeling when you bought, when they bought their homes. It's just a natural instinct and it is what happens in a growing community. If you believe that Effingham is not gonna continue to grow, I think that's a...
No, so we, we, we're all aware of that. So to one point, I mean, the use, I mean, is this gonna be low-income, is it gonna be rental, is it gonna be owner, I mean, do you have a plan?
Would not allow it to be low-income, it's not, I, I can't imagine that it would be what's called a low-income housing tax credit deal. And in order to do that, I, I'm an apartment developer as well as a single-family developer, so I understand both aspects and the, the nuances of what apartment communities, uh, have to do to make the numbers work. Uh, I will tell you that there's homes in Belmont Glenn that are probably rented for less than what I would envision the rental price would be on these units. Uh, the units that I propose and probably the same units that someone else that bought the property would propose. I could see the possibility that if it was sold to another developer, they might build, um, they might build a project that's similar in scope, but sell it for ownership rather than rental, as an example. The density's gonna be the same, the impacts are gonna be the same.
Yes, I understand that.
Really, it doesn't matter, but, uh, but the, the price of the land and the price of the rental rates that would be there would not allow low-income house, unless this body decides to incorporate inclusionary zoning where you would require it. I don't envision that happening, but if it did happen...
I don't foresee that happening with this, with this board. Um, does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Conter at this time? All right, well then I'm going to close the public comment time over this meeting.
Can I, can I say one more thing?
Very quickly, sir, I think we've about, we've rehearsed it all.
Of course, here, but part of the frustration for us living in that community and, and with the HOA board is anytime we reach out to Conter Group to ask questions about what's going on or what's gonna happen in the future, we get exactly what we just got up here five minutes ago. Well, I, I don't know if it's gonna be this now or the possibility of that. He started his, he started his first comment and he said, "I'm so sorry for what you guys are going through." But now he's gonna stand up here and tell me and the rest of the people in this community what's good for our kids. When anytime you at, anytime you ask anybody where they wanna live, I like to live in Richmond Hill or Effingham. The reason they choose to live here is because of the school district and because of how well we take care of our children. All this is gonna do is overflow, all of that.
And, and I understand, obviously, we've, we've heard a, a lot about the schools here tonight, I mean, this is a rezoning. Um, I know the county, the county tries to work with the school board, but I mean, this is, this is a rezoning and, and, um, school, school district lines, I, I under, I understand, and, and a lot of the other comments unfortunately are from an HOA, um, type standpoint, so.
All right, well, thank you.
But I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
And, sir, um, I, so we're gonna, I'm gonna close the public comment at this time. Um, does the board wish to have any comments, um, thoughts? I mean, I got...
Just a question, do we have anything that states, uh, PUD residential density?
The, a, a plan development doesn't have guidelines like that and, and, and that's what makes it a different type of zoning district, in, in Effingham County at least. What we require is that the developer, the applicant come to us with what they want to do and then we kind of work our way to an agreement from there looking at the densities that are allowed in similar types of zoning districts. But plan development by itself doesn't have a table like R1 or R6 does telling us lot size, setbacks and density per acre. So in this case, uh, with multifamily, in the normal time, we would, we would expect to talk to someone while looking at our R3, our multifamily development zoning district and we would look at those densities. That ordinance, incidentally, is in the process of being revised and that will be on the board commissioner's agenda tomorrow night and in fact, we'll talk about it a little later at this meeting. Uh, and so currently, our, the density in R3 is, is twelve units per acre and that doesn't mean there will be twelve units on an acre, what it means is it just, a developer plans their overall density and, and looks at their gross acreage and then the number of units and, and does their calculation and it can be no more than twelve. So for example, with a hundred and seventy-four units that were originally brought to us when we met last July with, with, uh, Mr. Conter, a hundred and seventy-four units on that, on the acreage, on eighteen acres would give us about nine point three net density. Um, and, no, wait a minute, sorry. With a hundred and seventy-four units, the gross density would be nine point three, uh, units per acre and the net would be twelve point seven and the net is just taking out the unbuildable area. So that generally speaking fit kind of into what we, we were used to seeing for R3. But the two hundred and six, which came about in the most recent revision of the plan development document, which we need in order to understand what's happening or what's proposed, that did increase the density, so the, uh, the gross density, you saw the total acreage with the number of units, were up to eleven units per acre and the net density is fifteen units per acre, which does exceed the R3 zoning district, so our guidance kind of goes out the window there. We don't really have a lot of guidance on that. Um, so as, just to summarize then, the, the one, one hundred and seventy-four units that we originally spoke about generally fit into our, you know, what we're used to seeing for that kind of acreage. Uh, and that, I hope does answer your question.
So if this was approved tonight, would this tie our hands?
Well, that's the question, I mean, the application asks us to amend the zoning from PD residential, I'm sorry, from PD Commercial to PD Multifamily Residential. And I'm not seeing that there was originally, and the original concept plan and it's the one actually, yeah, this is the original concept plan that I've got showing on your screen, the newer version is actually in your packet. The original concept plan shows a hundred and seventy-four units, so that's what we were operating under. Um, in recent, the recent month or so, we've been working with, um, the developers engineer as kind of the intermediary to revise the plan development document and just get some more information on density and get information on land uses. And, and it was with the most recent revision that we saw the number jump to two hundred and six and we don't see it supported in the concept plan. So that is unusual in a plan development, I don't know if that locks as inks, we don't have an actual plan, we have a, a concept that, the concept, the, the illustration shows us a hundred and seventy-four potential units. Whereas the document, the, the text, you know, it's a two-page text with some tables, that, that references a maximum of two hundred and six. So you may wish to make a motion, you know, that references the density and that way you could clarify what would be permitted. But at this time, we don't have ordinance guidance that, 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 that accommodates fifteen units per acre.
Thank you.
What else does PD Commercial allow for besides housing?
Well, again, see, it really, there is no, there, there is no particular list of permitted uses because PD Plan Development is one of those zoning districts where a developer, an applicant could create their own district and the idea is that you're potentially mixing uses and that's what was, was envisioned here, the, the Belmont Glenn single-family residential portion was the residential portion and then this would've been perceived, you know, planned for commercial. This, my assumption would be that when, if we ever saw a development proposal, it would be for something similar to B2, which is, uh, you know, stores or just small-scale development, it's sixteen acres, it's not, not a huge site. I don't think the B3, the more intensive highway commercial, uh, list of permitted uses would've been something that was envisioned for this. But I, I can't say, I mean, the, the original PD document does discuss this being a supporting commercial development to support the residential, so you know, you would assume what the, uh, folks here tonight have been mentioning, coffee shops, small retail stores, just a small development.
I thought PD had a, a required acreage?
Well, the overall acreage, um, and again, going back to, I think it was two thousand and six, two thousand and four, when the Research Forest tract was, was, you know, envisioned as a plan development, it was a much larger, much more acreage in those days. So that's the original document and there've been revisions to it since then to accommodate what actually took place in Belmont Glenn, there've been, there was a revision a couple of years ago to accommodate the increase in density for the New Haven portion now. That's going to be up to two hundred and ninety-nine units, it was originally envisioned as ninety-eight, ninety-nine. So there was a change in lot size there. Um, so there is a kind of an overall scheme, but this was just shown as commercial and referenced as commercial to support the residential development.
And the traffic study will be, will come?
That would, assuming if, if rezoning is approved and if the sketch plan process, um, um, comes to an approval, then the next step would be that the applicant submits site development plans and we would require this traffic study during that process. It would be a condition of approval of the land disturbance permit.
Anybody wanna comment? I mean, we've closed public comment, but I, I'll give you a brief moment. If it's something that pertains to something that Ms. Teresa just said. All right, sir, I need you to come back to the podium. I need you to come back to the podium.
If, if the board wants to move forward with the approval of 174 units for density, the owners would accept that number. I can't guarantee that the site plan will look exactly like the site plan that you see here, but it would at least give a guarantee of the maximum density that could be done on a site plan similar to what, what the sketch plan that was produced for you.
All right, sir. Thank you. That answers your question. I mean, I, I just, I'll just say for myself, I mean, I'm, I know we've approved these on state highways, but I, too, am very concerned with this amount of traffic on Hodgeville Road. And I get what the traffic experts are going to say, and that is that commercial property has high traffic counts as well, but in my opinion, that's.
It's going to be the residents that are.
It's arbitrary.
Throughout the day.
It's throughout the day and who knows what kind of business you're going to get. Some of them will be high-traffic and some of them might not be so. I mean, I just, I'm having, I'm, I'm really struggling. I, I know we've approved multifamily and we've approved this kind of density, but I'm just, I'm struggling with where this one is. So that's just, and that's just me.
I am as well.
Not just you.
So when Effingham Parkway gets completed and it drops off on Blue Jay, we're not too far from Blue Jay. If we take a left out of Belmont Glenn, you get down to 9th, 9th Street, Blue Jay. Where, is there going to be a, a on-ramp there? Is there going to be an on-ramp to get up on the Parkway?
There's going to be.
Off of Blue Jay?
I mean, it's going to end at Blue Jay.
Off of Blue Jay?
Some of the traffic flow on Hodgeville hopefully, but then it's just going down to 30.
Correct.
And they're in, so we're just moving it from here to there.
Does anybody have any additional comments, questions? If there are none, I'll call for a motion.
Based on the information that's been presented tonight, I don't feel like this area is ready for that type of development and I'm going to make a motion to deny the request.
I have a motion for denial. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Smith, all is in favor of denial. Any opposed? Motion carried by all.
If, if you listen to what I said at the beginning of the meeting, items that are approved as well as denied move forward to the county commissioners. This is merely a recommendation to the commissioners. That meeting is on March the 1st. Sorry, Mr. Conter. We're going to take a real short break and we'll come back and wrap up.
Punch him in the fucking face when he said, "I'll put something there like a concrete plant next to you." Fucking motherfucker.
Well, he, he's, uh.
Well, this is my question to ask him. I never got a clear answer. When you made the master plan, you said, "These are going to be houses and that's going to be commercial." Commercial to me is a barbershop and a coffee shop and a.
That's all he'd be able to put in there anyway with B2.
And nobody talked about the drainage problem. That whole thing is going to be a swamp.
It is, it already is. And see, the, the other problem is with Effingham Parkway, the two ways that they will be able to get on, the three ways they'll be able to get on the Parkway. If they can go down Hodgeville to Blue Jay and go back towards Rincon and get on where the gas line connects, they'll be able to get on there. They can go down to Goshen, turn on Goshen and get on it there. Goshen, the Parkway is going to be a, have the right-of-way and Goshen will have to stop at the right-of-way. You won't be able to just go through Goshen like you can go Mount. You'd have to stop, cross the Parkway.
So it's not elevated?
No, not elevated, it's at green.
It's on the ground.
Yeah. And so the other place they go to the roundabout on Highway 30, that's the only ways right now that you'll be able to get on that Parkway. So people in Staffordshire, you know, off of Blue Jay, they're probably going to take that, but the other people are not. You know, those people are not, when I come home from work, there'll be 30 cars lined up to try to get on Blue Jay Road just for me to get home at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the afternoon. If you put that.
Where are they coming from? They're coming down from 30 all the way down Hodgeville to Blue Jay and taking a right?
Because, because they, they live in all those other developments out, it's out in the woods all around.
You've got a real problem. That's always been the problem. It's called roads.
Roads, yeah.
We don't have any roads. You have Highway 21, if that breaks down, you can't get down Hodgeville to 30 to get over to 17 to get into Bloomingdale to get to 16. I mean, you're just locked in this little.
When there's a, Peter, when there's a wreck somewhere before you get I-95, all the traffic turns and comes down Blue Jay and either goes to 80 or they go around 30 to try to go around the wreck. Because nowadays, social media, you know where the wreck is right away. So if they can get around, it's unbelievable. And what I didn't like about what he said, he was so non-committal about what they were going to do. He wanted a door left open for 200 or whatever amount of units. They want to stick on 18 acres. Come on, that's a tremendous density for a country road. You know, if you're, if you're in Abacoon Street, I get that. It's way on Abacoon.
Yeah, there's times when I'm trying to get to Savannah for therapy in the mornings or get to the airport to get to Houston or something and 21 locks up. You've got to go down Goshen over to Hodgeville. And now I've sort of figured out that get on Hodgeville and then go on Callak Henry, but then it's all backed up on Callak Henry trying to get on to 30. We don't have enough traffic lights. I mean, traffic lights are a pain, but they control the flow. You stop, let him go. Now you stop, let him go. You know, it's, I mean, you don't have that because there's no, there's no, what's the word? There's, nobody, there's no grace between drivers anymore. It's just like, go, 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 go. Don't let you out because then you'll be in front of me.
The new Blue Jay and McCall intersection didn't work too well right there. I've done, got seven wrecks down there.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Four car, it's not a roundabout, it's a, where it used to turn straight off McCall right there at the railroad tracks. It goes down.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. What in the heck kind of thing is that?
It don't work very well.
No, because I came, I came back with a friend down Courthouse, no, McCall, and we were coming down to.
Where, Blue Jay and McCall, that new intersection.
Really?
And I was standing out there.
It's pretty simple. Well, well, what happens is you come, if you're coming.
It's a stop sign.
Look.
Yeah. Coming around that corner and you want to turn to go say, "Oh, McCall, man," that's where the problem is. They cut a bunch of traffic away from him, I know that.
Standing there talking to a guy. Went down past the new intersection and just turned left and went into the woods. I was telling him, he said, "I think that was my wife." And I was like, "Oh, man, I'm glad I didn't say something big." Because I was thinking.
Have you turned in there with a trailer?
See ya.
It's tight. I don't, why would they make it better? I was the third truck in line. A log truck was coming down that road and turning to get back on McCall or go to Rincon wherever it was going.
Had to back up.
You couldn't back up because he, he had the right-of-way. He's got the right-of-way. He committed two turns.
What do you need?
There's a Chevrolet pickup truck there. He, he almost hit that truck because he blew the horn and he got stopped. Well, there were so many cars backed up behind us that couldn't move.
Good luck.
Yeah, I got out my truck, walked back about 20 vehicles, said, "Could you move back a foot? Could you move back a foot? Could you?" And we got him enough room to back that, his truck up and turn it off the road where that guy could make the turn. Since then, they come back and they moved a white stripe that nobody abides by. They moved it back about six or eight feet and they should have moved it back.
Getting them ready for Thursday.
Because a log truck can't make that turn. A log truck can't make that turn.
I turned in with my little boy with a bulldozer and I was like, "Good gosh, I'm about running a ditch."
You can't make that turn at the angle because it's not a 90. It's not a 90, it's like a 120 degree turn. And I was like, "Damn, I'm glad nobody was there." Hey, let's finish this thing.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll knock this last one out. Peter, Peter went in and went home to be with his wife. Item number 16 is a public hearing for consideration of amendments to Appendix C Zoning Ordinance, Article 2. Do I have to read all that? Districts R3, multifamily, R6, single-family, B1 neighborhood commercial, B2 general commercial, and B3 highway commercial. Ms. Teresa.
Yes, so, as you know, the county is working with consultants to revise our comprehensive planned land use portion, uh, element and also to update our development codes, which includes zoning districts. And we have jumped in with a few zoning districts as kind of a, to start the process off because there was a, a need for clarity and, in, in, in some revisions in these districts. And they are R3 multifamily, R6 high-density, single-family, B1, B2, B3, which are our three different commercial zoning districts. And most of this was spurred by an increase in our multifamily, in, in, in applications for high-density multifamily zoning, rezonings. So the changes that have been proposed and discussed by the commissioners at the January 18th workshop and then revised and resubmitted and are now on their agenda for tomorrow night include an expansion of the definitions about common outdoor space and also revisions to density in the two residential districts, reducing the maximum density in R3 from 12 to nine units per acre, clarifying the amenity requirements and clarifying the open space requirement per unit or per development, per net usable area. So that assists staff when we're working with applicants in determining how much, you know, land is usable or buildable. In R6, the density is proposed to be reduced from six units per acre to four and a half units per acre, which would result in a lot size increase from 6,600 square feet to 8,500 square feet. Going into the commercial districts, it's really a sense, it's mostly just clearing things up and housekeeping. So from residential units above commercial, we're renaming that to mixed-use residential as a permitted use in B1. We're also cleaning up an omission from when we added self-storage, mini-storage to B1 as a conditional use. It's actually still a prohibited use, so we're removing the prohibition to clean that one up. So mini-storage will still be a conditional use in B1, which makes it a use by right in B2 and B3. The multifamily units that were mentioned or the density that was allowed in B2 has been changed to just be considered mixed-use residential and there is a definition to help us understand what that is. In B3, the main changes are, again, mixed-use residential to clarify what's meant there and to encourage true mixed-use, you know, shopping or commercial and residential together. And that actually goes, in B3, we do see the maximum density of 12 units per acre continued. So that, B3 is our highway commercial and what we're envisioning there is if mixed-use developments are occurring along highways, that residential and commercial could be more compact development and we could get more units per acre because there'll be more amenities by definition with the mix of commercial and residential. So that would, of course, all get fleshed out in, in, in just meetings with the developers and in the sketch plan. The other changes are cleaning up in the permitted, in the conditional uses, removing motor freight terminals and warehouse operations from conditional uses in B3. They're considered to be more industrial in nature, so we're removing them from B3, which is highway commercial and put in, just leaving them in industrial. And that is the sum total of our changes. The maximum building height in B3 would go up to 60 feet. That was, and that is the only other change.
So you took warehouses out, but you left mini warehouses in, is that right?
Yes, warehouses meaning, and again, we don't have, we still haven't refined this to have size guidelines or, you know, massing guidelines, but mini-storage or self-storage, these are the small kind of neighborhood-serving amenities or businesses that are permitted in all the business, in all the B commercial categories now. Warehouses, what we're understanding by that is the larger-scale warehouses that we're seeing in clustered, for example, on Old Augusta Road or even in the OmniTrack site, the larger, anything from 50,000 square foot and above, and that's what we've seen in the last couple of years, is warehouses that are several hundred thousand square feet. But recently, we did actually see one for 50,000 square feet at your last meeting.
Well, shouldn't you have a square footage requirement in that?
That's going to be the next phase, right? This was, this was an attempt to give staff guidance because we're seeing so, such an increase in these kind of applications that are dealing with multifamily and high-density residential. So it was an attempt to, to provide some guidance and moving forward, we do, that was definitely discussed at the workshop, how we can break up warehouses to maybe, to, between light and heavy industrial. Are we going to look at the overall square footage? Are we going to look at, you know, the size of the industrial park itself? So that is definitely something that is going to be looked at.
Does anybody in public wish to make any questions or comments? So on the R6, you, you clarify four, no more than four and a half homes per acre. And, and I guess, and we, and we've upped the lot size and is that on the overall acreage? Because most of the time, you know, when, when these people bring these plans up here, even with the smaller lots, they're only running like an overall density of three lots per acre.
Yes, that's true. Uh, that is, that is exactly right. And so reducing the density didn't seem to be in any way undermining the density that we're seeing. The, the point was to increase the, the lot size. And we're going to get an 80, if we get an 8,500 square foot lot, first of all, we'll see more room for the kind of amenities and, and accessory buildings that people do seem to want to include on their lots. But we're also going to, we're, we're hoping to get just a, a better development with, and this is in R6, so there's still always that plan development option. That, that's always an option.
Yeah, and I understand, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking, it was, it was already six, no more than six, but I've never seen six. I mean, I'm asking, what is that calculation? I mean, I never understood that number. You can't have more than six per acre when I've never seen a plan that had really over three per acre.
Well, we've seen the lot size of .15 acres and that's where, that's what it really comes down to. So the, the, the six units per acre was this, you know, a sixth of an acre size for a house. And in this case, we're reducing that density so the lot size would become .19 acres per house.
So we changed it to R4?
No, R4 is, is mobile home parks, so we're going to leave it, I think, R6. Because that would, that would mean revisiting our entire zoning map and so I think we'll probably leave it at R6 and just, you know, the, the density is shifting.
Yeah, R6 got a bad name because everybody said you could put six homes per acre, but you couldn't.
No, you could not do that.
You couldn't.
Not, you, no, because roads and infrastructure, it's just, but, but the calculation, it, it's, it's the usable area and it's, it's the, the number of, the size of the lot per house. If, if every single acre was built out at .15, then you, you could, you could get six per acre, but not every single acre is getting built out. Because there's wetlands, there's roads, there's open areas.
And so on that, you're, we're saying 15% of the total acreage is common outdoor open space?
Yes.
But then down at the bottom, there's a 10% of that space? 10% of common open space shall be green space? The implementation of a conservation easement is strongly encouraged. So we're, we're leaving 15% of the total acreage out, but 10% of it, of that 15%, is that right? Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
The green space means it has to be green. Common open area can include a pool, it can include tennis courts, it can include walking trails, so they're, you know, potentially impervious surface. The 10% would, would have to be.
10% of that 15%?
Yeah. Yeah, 10% of common open space shall be green space. So we need to be sure that it's not just all paved amenities, that there's actual green space included. that there's actual green space included in the open, common open area.
Algae-covered stagnant water is green.
Yeah, does, um And early, how about the wetlands? They're, they're out of that?
They're out, they're, it's usable area. I'm sorry, we've got, what are we calling it?
See, that says most, 15% of total acreage. We took out the ponds and lakes being used for up to 15, 50%.
You know, I'm gonna have to check on that and see if we, if we should have changed that to net usable area as we did in R3.
Net usable area? That would be, would the wetlands calculate it out?
Yes.
5.6, what?
Net usable area? Yeah, we missed that one, thanks for pointing it out.
Mr. Bennett, would you like to speak, sir?
Yeah, my, uh, my only question, and I asked the commissioners this in the workshop the other night, is in the event, and there's one in particular, I'll just say it's a B3 multifamily project that's been purchased, planned, designed, getting ready to apply, and then they're now saying mixed use. It has to be mixed use for B3 multifamily. And how, just to confirm, there was some response that if the project was under review, that this ordinance wouldn't apply for projects under review. So I'm just trying to clarify every opportunity we get as to what does under review mean. So that's the concern for, for projects that are well underway, for them to be changing now as to what can be done with it. Property already's owned, already initial planning going on, and now it changes, for instance, this one, still 12 units per acre, but it's now mixed use, commercial as well. So that's just one thing I wanted to get out there and get addressed, see how we could get it addressed.
Did you get an answer?
The only answer was verbally in that if the project is under review, it would not be the new ordinance, the new ordinance changes would not apply to projects under review. But I don't know how you address that in an ordinance.
Well, it's on the agenda tomorrow night with the Board of Commissioners for a first reading and probably getting a verbal from a commissioner, the commissioners as they're discussing it, that becomes part of the record would be the thing to do. If you wanted to ask for
I mean, at a minimum, I don't know that it accomplishes it, but it's better than where I'm at right now with it, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Larson. I'm gonna say you're good, but you'll have to go to the commissioners to get a confirmation. Go ahead, Eric.
It's obviously up to the Board of Commissioners to choose, but they have been advised that they should probably set an effective date on the ordinance. A lot of times, the ordinance becomes effective immediately. In this case, they might want to consider a 90-day, 120-day, 180-day, something like that, effective date, so that anyone with a project similar to Brett's, you know, have a hurry up and get this thing in before the deadline.
Right.
And that has been given to them as direction whether or not, whatever their motion tomorrow night will be, or first reading tomorrow night, but they'll have to make that decision as part of their motion.
Not, not a phase in, but to clear the existing docket and move forward from there.
On a project like you talking about, would like 90 days give you enough time?
Yeah, I mean, I think that depends on what is, what gets you in the docket, as he would say. If you're in the docket, I just, we just need to know what it takes to be in the docket to make sure we just meet that and don't kind of get passed by.
So how does this change your current plans?
So it would have no, B3 didn't have the mixed-use requirement for multifamily before. And the way I just heard, the mixed-use is commercial. In B3, how would that, I don't know that there are a lot of details of exactly what that mixed-use means in B3. Really, in the location, that I don't believe there'd be any, any real benefit to having commercial there.
They don't want to go to pull there. The lower yards.
So, those are my only just comments.
The definition
Thank you, Brett.
In that Article 2 definition at the bottom of that first page.
Yeah.
It's 259, and it just took a simple series of mixture of non-residential uses, such as a recon ground, blow-in, etc., it doesn't define it in the general, in the B3.
So is that required? Is it a requirement? I didn't realize it was a requirement, I'm sorry, I missed that part.
In the new B3.
In the new B3, there is a requirement for mixed-use residential. Let's see. But it still allows a maximum density of 12 units per acre? Anybody else have any questions or comments? So Teresa, this is going to the commissioners tomorrow night?
Yes, it is.
We didn't announce it that way. Is that a problem? Our agenda says March 1st.
This was advertised in the newspaper as going to the commissioners tomorrow night.
Okay. Alright, is there any additional questions or comments? Call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Larson, all is in favor of approval. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Anything further? Anybody on the Zoom? I forgot. Meeting adjourned.
In an event with a huge change like that appears to be, I think I need more time.
I agree.
I don't really understand all there is about it.